Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Raditz.
Here.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Lasky.
Here.
Mayor Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Keck.
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Rusga.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
City assessor.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Finance director.
Here.
Police chief.
Here.
Fire chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Roll call complete.
Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizens comment on agenda-related items, limited to five minutes. Anybody? Consent agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to approval, any member of council may have an item removed and taken up during a regular portion of the meeting. Items include approval of minutes, cash balances, revenue and expenses, balance sheet, notification regarding next study session. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
There's a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Raditz.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Rusga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of awarding a contract to upgrade sewer system main along US 31. City has budgeted to upgrade three sanitary sewer mains along US 31 by installing a cure-in-place liner inside the pipelines. The project has been publicly bid with two bids being received. Corby Energy Services, 121 and 135. Intuit Form Technologies, 143,068. Engineer estimate, 89,960. At this time, council could take action to award a contract to the low bidder, Corby Energy Services LLC, in the amount of $124,135. Authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute this agreement and increase the sewer capital outlay budget for this project by $35,000. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion?
I just have one question.
What?
Is there, I know it's a small project, but is there some contingency built in?
There is. The original, I didn't bring my memo with me, but the original project budget, even though the bid that, low bid that came in was higher than the engineer's estimate, the engineer's estimate was lower than what we had planned for. So, the award of this with the budgeted funds still leaves us about a $5,000 contingency.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks. Heather, would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Rusga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Consideration of establishing 2025 poverty exemption guidelines and new federal income guidelines as approved by the state tax commission. The adoption of a resolution establishing poverty exemption guidelines for exemption from property tax contributions is required in order for the board of review to grant poverty exemptions. The homestead of persons who the board of review determines by reason of poverty to be unable to contribute to the public charge is eligible for exemption in whole or in part from taxation under Public Act 390, 1994, MCL 211.7U. The state tax commission requires that the city of Manistee adopt a resolution every year and approve the income guidelines adopted by the state tax commission. The resolution states that we use the federal income guidelines and its sustainability the same as last year's resolution. I cannot read tonight, I am so sorry. At this time, council could take action to approve a resolution establishing 2025 poverty exemption guidelines. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Heather, would you please take a roll?
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Rusga.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Now, we will have a TriShare discussion from Christina Baczka from United Way.
Good evening. Thank you so much. It's nice to see a lot of your faces again. Heather has a presentation quick. I just wanted to give you a little bit of background on my TriShare, or Michigan's TriShare program. It was created as an economic development benefit, and it's for employers to retain and attract workforce. It was bipartisanly supported in legislature as a pilot, and it has now moved to an ongoing program of the state budget. Right now, we have currently over 200 participating businesses in the state, including governmental agencies. So, really, what does childcare look like? It looks like it's $122 billion across the United States in lost earnings, productivity, and revenue. I just wanted to set the stage with that slide, because that's an alarming number. In Michigan, it's $288 billion annually in Michigan's economy for the 2023 Chamber report. Our median income in Manistee, as of the 2022 report from DHD number 10, was $54,422. A family home provider that can service six children, based on the median income for Manistee, would be $326,532 a year to our local economy. So, these little, small businesses are economic drivers for our community, and it helps families afford, this benefit helps families afford their childcare and stay in the workforce. So, this TriShare doesn't address all of our childcare issues, but it helps address the affordability issue. One thing that I ran for you today, because I thought maybe to give you kind of an idea of the landscape, is the number of childcare providers that we have, and the number of infant slots we have compared to the birth, the amount of live births. So, just using 2022 data, because that was most available, the number of live births in Manistee County was 180. According to the records that I pulled today, there's about 52 infant and toddler slots in Manistee County. That's a staggering difference. And in 2023, our birth rates were 193. So, not all childcare providers that are licensed have to take infants. It's a four-to-one ratio. It costs more, which is where we're seeing this number from. So, just kind of wanted to tell you that. We have nine centers, six family homes, and seven group homes. So, we have two things that we need to do. Not only do we have to help parents afford childcare, we also have to be community-friendly to establish and make sure that our guidelines and our ordinances support these small businesses coming into the community, because they're low-margin businesses at this point. So, if we don't make it friendly for them to come in, we don't get any more of them. So, moving on. What is TriShare? TriShare is a three-way split between an employer, an employee, and the state of Michigan. It's an equal third to each of the childcare costs. There is an income eligibility guideline that goes along with this. These are the 2024 rates, but as you can see, for a family of four, it's $62,400 minimum to $101,400 at the high end. These numbers change every January, so as of February 1st, we will have new numbers for 2025. Number of people in the household does count all children and all adults within the household. Employer responsibilities for this benefit is to promote it. We have all of the marketing information, all of the tools you need. Verify gross income as reported, if necessary. Very rarely is it necessary. It's only if it's a seasonal worker, or someone that we just can't understand their pay scale. Collect the employee's portion. We recommend payroll deduction, but if there's something that works better, you can do it any way that you would like, as long as that you collect their one-third and pay your one-third together to United Way at the end of the month. We invoice once a month after care services have been paid out. So, United Way fronts the money for the program and gets reimbursed by the employers and employees and the state. So, the providers are paid on the schedule that they want to be paid, so that their cash flow is as fluid as possible, keep them as stable as possible in business. So, and then just inform United Way if an employee is leaving the organization in as timely a manner as possible. Employers incur no costs unless employees are active and enrolled in the program. So, if they only use from September to June, and they have summer off, then there's no cost to collect. The program would stop for them for that part. If they're just using it in summer and they don't use it for the school year, that's okay too. So, there's no one-third cost if there's no care being billed. If you want more information, since this is just a brief overview, myTriShare.org has that, plus a lot of frequently asked questions. There's an employer section, employee section, and a childcare provider section. All of the businesses can be found on the main page. You can hover over the counties and see what businesses participate. And anybody that is participating, it links back to their website, so if there is job openings, they could look there at that employer. And then, on the last page, there's a list where you can search the county, print everybody for that county, and then, so you can see all the participating employees. So, there's two ways to do that. And now, I welcome your questions.
So, it's only for children, correct? So, like, if someone, I just don't, I'd be afraid there'd be a little discrimination. If someone was taking care of an elderly parent and had to stay home to take care of that parent, could they use that same plan, or is it just strictly children?
No, it's just children that are in licensed childcare facilities.
So, that would be age, birth to 11?
You can go up to 17 if there was a special need, and the licensed provider did have that waiver in place with the state.
One of your slides showed income verification.
Yeah.
Is it income-based?
It is income-based, yes. It picks up where the DHS CDC child subsidy stops, which is about 200% of the federal poverty limit.
Right.
We do 200 to 325.
Christina?
Yes.
Go ahead. I was just wondering, does this work with, like, pre-tax exemptions, like AFLEC and plans that you can pay for care? Does it, is it?
It is not seamless. We are trying to, we are actually working right now to find an employer that may want to administer their own de-cap using TriShare as that FSA benefit. But, right now, there are so many FSA or de-cap providers, they all do things a little different. This one might have a credit card, this one might have a check base. And so, we try to find a way to work with the employer with that, but it's actually a post-tax benefit, the way it sits right now.
Okay.
Is there a cost to the employer to implement this, or a monthly charge for the employer?
No, only if there's care.
Only the share.
It's just the one.
It's just the cost of the share, not?
Yep. Yep. No administrative costs. The state picks up all of those.
And that would be for care during employment? The employer could say, "These are our hours of employment, and we do not pay for care outside of these employment hours," correct?
If the provider doesn't bill for that, or you could state that it's only for these specific days, but that is absolutely something that we could put in employer parameters to ensure that's happening. And it doesn't pay for, like, pickup fees, one-time registration fees, or things like that. So, one-time fees are not paid for by TriShare. That's the parent's responsibility.
Thanks, Christina.
Thank you.
We will have a presentation of the annual State of the Streets report, Sean Middleton and Lucas Richardson.
I'm actually going to.
And Jeff, sorry.
So, I think this actually officially kicks off our budget season. Usually, we present this each year in January, and it kind of gets council and everybody starting to think about priorities for the upcoming year. So, Lucas is handing out our, the brochure we put together each year called the State of the Streets. It gives you a lot of background on asset management, PESR ratings, and kind of looks at the network as a whole between major and local streets. So, every year, city staff and our engineers work on putting together a TIP, or a transportation improvement program. It's very similar to the capital improvement programs that we put together for municipal buildings, parks, water system, sewer system, but this is specifically for the street network. The plan is based on a lot of information, including PESR ratings. PESR is a unified grading system to structurally evaluate the pavement. So, it's not rideability, it's not, it's actually the structure of the pavement itself. And we go around and rate every mile of the city's street network every fall, and then we can compare year to year how it measures up to last year and previous years. We incorporate asset management principles through our program. Certainly, the project cost, every street segment's going to have a different cost depending on size, condition, and then the treatments that we put on there. Also, grants and other type of outside funding. We're always looking to leverage dollars and get the most work done that we can. And then incorporating pavement maintenance techniques, some that we can do in-house, some that we can contract, and those are all part of what we call the mix of fixes as part of the asset management. Utility upgrades actually play a very significant role in the street upgrades in the city of Manistee. We certainly don't want to pave a street and then, years later, have to go back and replace the water main or upsize the sewer main. So, we try to plan out all the capital improvements and the utilities, and then mesh those with the street budget as well. And what we've been doing for a number of years is, when there's a utility replacement, we have, we've got a kind of a formula where that utility will pay for the street that is disturbed above it, and then, any of the rest of the street network has to come out of the street funds. So, when we put together the budget numbers on these, they're always very tied together. We put together probably a three-to-four-year projection on the tip, and we feel comfortable about that, but I will tell you that it changes every year. We've tried to go out five and six years, like we do in the rest of our capital improvement programming, but there's so many variables that take into account, you know, a failed sewer line, or a water line that we're having issues with, or we end up getting a grant, or outside funding, and so, also priorities. And the next slide will show you, a lot of that goes into that. So, we formally put together this plan and presented it as part of the annual budget, and then it gets adopted in the budget in May. And then, throughout the year, we're working on it, and almost on a monthly basis, updating it. If projects come in under budget or over budget, we're adjusting those and tracking all those numbers. The asset management aspect of this is really a whole, separate conversation, but just wanted to touch on it to let council know that we still practice this. The example that's up on the screen is just a snapshot, and you could do this a million different ways. But, in the upper left-hand corner, it basically shows a street over a 30-year lifecycle. And basically, what that street did was mill off, or grind off, all the existing pavement, and then pave new. So, basically, it was brand-new, which would put it in the excellent rating. As that pavement starts to deteriorate, and it gets down to that dash line, which is labeled fair, that's really, the fair line is what we call the critical distress point. So, if you let the pavement go below that, then the techniques to upgrade it and repave it are much more expensive. But, in this case, the pavement was again milled off, repaved, and so, over 30 years, you've done two milling-filled projects. As an example, it cost $80,000. What asset management does is, an example in the lower right-hand corner, where that pavement was milling-filled in year one, but then it was crack-sealed, you know, a couple times. It probably was then, had like a slurry seal, or some sort of a seal coat on it. So, we protected that pavement, and we did it in smaller year increments. But, the overall pavement condition stayed at a much better rate, and the total cost of those preventive maintenance techniques included with the original paving is only $36,000. So, last year, we put a slurry seal on 8th Street, and we had some of you and many people in the community saying, "Holy Jesus, why are we doing this? That road's not that bad." But, this is one of those techniques where we can do at low cost, and we can protect that pavement, and we can keep it in that good state for many more years. And if you continue to be able to do that, we can prolong the life expectancy of those particular streets. The downside is that you're not touching the very worst streets, because that is so expensive, and asset management really says, "Keep the good streets good." And then, as you find money and opportunities to upgrade the worst streets, then you do that. But, you're going to see through the presentation that we've got a lot of streets that are in poor condition, but that's why we're trying to leverage grant dollars and developer dollars and other ways. Oops. So, when we go through this, and we actually created this slide, sitting in a meeting and talking about all the inputs that we receive, and all the different information, when we put together the TIP and try to mesh it with the capital improvement plans. There's economies of scale, project sizes, so if you do one block, that's going to be more expensive than doing six blocks. There's always developer developments, brownfield money. So, an example, if the Little River Holdings proceeds with the Gateway Project, we can get that block of River Street upgraded as part of that project, and we can capture the brownfield taxes from that to get repaid for that. So, we're always looking for opportunities. Last year, we did the beach at 1st Street because of the Hampton, so we took advantage of some of that development. As I mentioned, we have utility needs that are ever-present. There's economic impacts. Should we pave the truck route before we pave a neighborhood street? Because that could impact commercial businesses and industry. Certainly, the condition that we've talked about, local and geographical distribution. If we start focusing in one area, then we get council people on the other side of town saying, "When are you going to do stuff in my neighborhood?" So, we're always mindful of that and trying to spread those projects out around town. Community and council feedback. We hear, we get phone calls probably every week from citizens saying, "When are you going to do my street?" And sometimes, it's great when it's in the transportation improvement program, but if it's not, it's a little bit harder to have those conversations. But, certainly, input from the citizens is always valuable to us, and same with council. Budget factors. It's always, we would do as much paving as we could afford to do, and as much as we could find money to do. We've talked about, a little bit about the asset management principles. So, how do we spread that out and do some of those asset management techniques that are going to preserve that pavement while recognizing that some streets may have not had been touched for 30, 40 years and are in very bad condition? Resident and properties impacted. Leveraging grants. Traffic volumes. Major streets carry much higher traffic volumes than local streets. There's different pots of money, actually, that can fund those different, those two differences, but major streets are also more expensive to do. Drainage issues, safety improvements. You know, one of the projects that we did this year was 6th Street in front of Kennedy School, and we worked with the school for years to plan out what their new layouts were going to be, and how the traffic was going to flow, and how the pedestrians were going to access that. And so, the street improvements that we did all support that investment by the school system. And I mentioned the treatments needed and treatments that are recommended. Sometimes, we would rather do a reconstruction, but we're going to need to do some other treatment just to get us by a few years. So, there's many different factors that go into this. Spicer's going to talk through some of the PESR treatment methods and...
Thanks, Jeff. So, I'm going to just hit on a little bit big picture, what the condition of the city's streets are overall. Probably talk a little bit about some of the big-picture costs on that, which will relate back to some of the asset management items that Jeff was talking about. So, I'm going to just kind of reiterate PESR again. So, that's, it's, that stands for Pavement, Surface Evaluation, and Rating. And I want to kind of highlight the word surface in there in a second, tell you why. So, every fall, Brandon Prince and Lucas from our office, they drive all the city's streets and they rate them. And the system is what they do, is they look at all the roads, and they look at cracks and the spacing on cracks and the numbers. And there's actually a system in place that you can rate from 1 to 10. And what's nice about that is it provides consistency from year to year, so we can kind of have a, you know, it's not totally subjective. There's probably some subjectivity in it, but it's a fairly objective process, and it's used all across the state by MDA and local agencies. And then, when they rate those, they rate them from 1 to 10. 10 being a brand-new road, and 1 being a road that's borderline gravel. I mean, it's, in worst case, it could really be alligator, potholed. And they do that throughout the system, and this is just kind of a breakdown, you're looking at, this was this year's rating, so you're seeing pretty current information from this fall. You know, in there, we're seeing all these different, what we call treatment methods. And what happens is, we look at the rating, and then, based on the condition of the road, a different treatment method typically applies. So, just for example, starting at the bottom here, reconstruction, which is literally rebuilding a road, tearing it out, putting new sand subbase, new aggregate base, new pavement, new curb and gutter, full reconstruction, very expensive. Those typically happen on ones and rated roads that are ones and twos. Heavy rehab, that is, would be what we call our milling fills, where we mill off an inch and a half and put it, you know, an inch and a half back. That would be a heavy rehabilitation project. And those are in the categories of 3 and 4 in the ratings, typically. And these, they're kind of gray areas, but generally speaking. Light rehab is getting into various types of surface treatments, where we're no longer really touching the pavement, so we're putting a micro-surface on top, like we did on 8th Street, or a full overlay using asphalt, that's, you know, we're putting it on top. Those are more light rehab methods for treating roads. They're in the 5 to 6 category. And then, the remaining sevens and eights falls into preventive maintenance, where it's really a pretty good road, it's in good shape, but it might be crack sealing or a seal coat we're putting on the roads. And that's, we're really not doing anything structurally to the road, we're just trying to get life out of it by keeping water from penetrating into cracks and things. Then, normal maintenance, what the city's doing on their, you know, basically a brand-new road, it's like street sweeping would be an example of some normal maintenance. So, I'm just going to kind of quickly go through these, just give you a sense of what this looks like in the city. So, our reconstruction projects are the low PESR ratings of 1 and 2. There's a significant amount, there's about 12, you know, 12.8 miles, 13 miles of it. And if we were to, if we could magically make money appear, it would cost us $66 million to fix all those roads. Reconstruction is very expensive, and there's a lot of roads that need it. And that equates to about, kind of wrote down a few numbers just to give you a sense on, you know, that's about $325,000 a block to reconstruct a road. So, heavy rehab, this is the milling fill type projects. We've got about nine and a half miles of those out there. And similar, it's less costly to do this, but still fairly expensive. Again, if we had the ability to do it, it would cost us $15 million today to go in and fix all those roads at one time. And, you know, that's comparable to about $200,000, about $100,000 a block to do a heavy rehab. We do a lot of this work, we do a lot of milling fills, and you'll see some of the projects we've done. Other methods we use here are like crush and shape, where we're literally going and crush the road, shape it, you know, and grade it, and then we pave over the top. Would be another method I would use here. So, light rehab, again, this is like an overlay or a micro-surface. Gets to be, we've got about four and a half, currently 4.4 miles of candidates. You know, and obviously, these change every year. Every year, your roads are getting older and degrading, and so, we're kind of, these numbers always move around. But, there's about a million dollars' worth of work there. That equates to about $15,000 a block. Then, finally, getting into this preventive maintenance, normal maintenance category. These are your good roads. This gets a little bit into what Jeff was talking about. So, there's, we've got almost 16 miles, but really, to take care of all those, we could do it for about $400,000. And the key to that is, you know, it's, A, it's cheap to do the work, because it's just really sealing the roads. And the key to that is, you know, it's, A, it's cheap to do the work because it's just really sealing the roads. But this is where these decisions are getting made is, you know, we got a road, it was done maybe five, six years ago, it looks pretty good. It's not intuitive to think we're going to go out and work on it. But what that does, it adds life to that. It's extending the life like Jeff was showing. And that work on a, really on a per block basis is in a, you know, $1,500 to $2,000 range. So it's very cost effective. And you can see how this kind of, you know, it's really, it looks like there's a lot of roads in all these pictures. And your network has about 50, what is the total, 52 miles, 55?
About 50.
Yeah, about 50 miles of roads. So just kind of sum, summing that all up. If we were, again, in a position where we could do it, you know, you could, you spend $82 million to literally fix every road because there's different types of treatments that bring them up, you know, and that would bring it back up to a certain level. And immediately the next day, they'll start to get old again. And you have to start, you know, you have to start planning for degradation. So it's, it's a never, absolutely never ending battle and there's never enough money. So that's where asset management is a big deal. It's really, you're getting the most out of your dollars if you spend them, you know. So in a perfect situation, and trust me, we haven't even ran into this, is you would take care of all your preventive maintenance first. You spend $400,000, done, get that finished. We still got money in the pot. Do all your light rehab work next, still got money, do your heavy and then finally reconstruction. And then all those other factors come into play that Jeff said that screwed it all up. But the really problem we run into is just from a public standpoint is, you know, everybody wants the crappy roads fixed. And so we want to follow asset management, it's the best bang for your buck. And so we're always balancing a little bit of, when we have opportunities to reconstruct, we do it. And usually, we're leveraging money, it's grants, it's a development, something like that where we can kind of get that work done, so. And I think, I'll leave it with that, I could talk about some percentages on that. But one thing, I guess, just big picture, the dollars you put in for reconstruction, this is an example, will only do a small fraction of the roads. Where on the other side, that preventive maintenance, those dollars would probably do 30% of the network. So it's just, it's a cost process we go through. So I think with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lucas. He's going to talk a little bit about work we did this year and what we have planned in the tip.
Thanks, Sean.
Yeah, don't take that. All right, I got to get my bearings here. Good evening, council. So I'm going to talk about the projects that happened in 2024 for the city and as well as the upcoming projects currently planned in the tip. Last year, we, the city completed a project on Lincoln Street, which consisted of water main improvements, storm sewer improvements, and also full reconstruction of the road base and a new curb and gutter and new pavement. Another project that happened in '24 was the Sixth Street project. Jeff and Sean both mentioned, this project was a heavy rehab project, crush and shape. We actually used the existing pavement, crushed it and created new road base out of that so we didn't have to haul in new gravel, which is expensive. And then repaving, and as you can see in the photo, significantly narrowing the road, reducing a lot of the on-street parking, addressing some of the safety issues. And was, was pretty much planned with the Kennedy Site Plan project as well that's ongoing. And then lastly, Eighth Street rehab, that was a light rehab project, micro surface treatment. And to point on what Jeff said earlier, this project, to give you some number comparisons, was about a third of the cost of Lincoln Street. So Eighth Street did 17 blocks of the city to rehab it, and then Lincoln Street did three. And this project was a third of the cost of that. And then to Sean's point, on the, on the left-hand side there, the photo doesn't really look all that bad from a photo, but it, it put it, or Eighth Street was rated in the middle ground of five or six because it had a couple of old patches, it had some crack, minor cracking going on. And then if you let that go, you'll see that one spot on Eighth Street that we rehabbed wasn't necessarily the right treatment for that one block. But for the rest of it, it was, and it didn't make sense to leave out one little block. It would eventually all be looking like that. And we don't want to get to that point because it's a lot more expensive. And I guess lastly, we don't have a slide for it, but we mentioned the First Street and Maple Street intersection project. That was also a transportation improvement plan project. There's no road improvements there, but all pedestrian safety. And that project was completed, completed in '24 as well. So now, as of today, this is what the three-year tip that city staff and other input has, has put together here. For 2025, projects that are currently scheduled are the Washington Street project, the old US-31 truck route project, and then miscellaneous overlays throughout the city, as well as the Spruce Street project that was supposed to happen in '24, but we didn't receive good bids on that. And are actually in the process of rebidding that right now. 2025 has a total street investment of about $800,000. But what you don't see and what I'm sure Ed is going to touch on later on is the amount of grant funding that we got for the projects for 2025 pretty much doubles that street investment. So we're putting about $1.6 million in, in investment into streets this year, but only having to pay for over $800,000 of that, which is great. In 2026, project investment was 2.1, or is planned for $2.19 million. And that includes projects on Fremont Street, Lake Street, Division and River, all, all together with the Gateway project, as well as High Street. And then 2027, currently planned, $1.1 million worth of investment for 14th, 15th and Maywood Reconstruction Project at the top of the hill, as well as Fourth Street between US-31 and Hancock, as well as McKee Street. And less, but not least, not a, not, not necessarily a city project, an MDOT project, but US-31 reconstruction is scheduled to happen in 2027, which is not on the map. But there's, the map on the screen is, is all three of those years, '25, '26 and '27. And now I'm going to pass it over to Mr. Bradford to talk about some trending with the Pacer data and financial stuff.
Good evening, council. We've been doing asset management and using Roadsoft, which is provided by Michigan Tech, since 2008. So the better part of 16 years. And we were one of the first communities to really get into that. We got an award, I think in 2009, from the Transportation Asset Management Council. And we've continued to do that over the years. But one of the things that I want to point out on these slides is we've made, not only using best practices, but councils over the years have really wanted to prioritize streets. And so we've made a really concerted effort within the financing confines to, to address the streets. And we've spent tens of millions of dollars on streets. And I, this kind of summarizes that whole journey and where we've been. So if you look at the, the top two slides, those are major streets from when we first started doing this until 2024. And you can see that we, we have increased the good streets by about seven percentage points. And unfortunately, the, the fares have fallen off by about 12 and the pores have increased about five percentage points. And you can see that reflected in the graph on the right, which is the average Pacer rating. So when we go out and rate the streets every year, we calculate these averages. And you can see, you know, it's gone up and down, and I'll talk about that in a little bit. But we're basically at the exact same point that we were 16 years ago on our major street network. If you look at the local streets, we've made more progress there. And that's been really a focus of, of city councils. So the goods have increased, you know, almost fourfold. And the fares have also increased and the pores have been reduced from 73 to 50%. So I think there's real progress there. And you can see that translates into, you would think it'd be a steeper curve, but it's not because you, it's the average of all the local streets. So it's gone from 3.7 to 4.8. A couple of things to really point out here. When the state funds our roads through the gas tax, they use a formula where 75% of the money is for major streets and 25% of the money is for local streets. And the reason that they do that is the major streets handle the vast majority of the traffic, even though it's a lower volume of miles. And in fact, the state doesn't allow you to transfer more than a certain amount from the major street fund to the local street fund to do local street projects. You have to make sure that you're maintaining your major streets. And, and we are, but it's basically flat. And part of that reason, we've spent a lot of money that normally would go to major streets on local streets because that's been a council priority over the years. If we go to the next slide here, Jeff and Sean both mentioned grant funding. So we try to apply for grants whenever we can and they're feasible to work into our construction schedule, given all those factors that Jeff talked about earlier. So for the category B grant, which was a new grant that the MDOT and the state came out with, which is for local streets, the first one, you know, that we've really had, we applied five years in a row and we finally got it in the fifth year. And that was what we did for Lincoln Street. We also had some category F applications, but we didn't get funded for either of those. But we have received a lot of grants, that's the second paragraph there. So we have a small urban grant that we did for 12th Street. I think 12th Street, in my opinion, is one of the nicest projects we've done in my tenure here at the city. It looks great, it was a very busy, busy traveled corridor, connects schools. It was a tremendous project and that was funded by, you know, a, a nice grant from the state. You know, we've gotten a lot of money for the Maple Street Bridge. Last round for the critical bridge grant was $820,000. And some of you may recall, probably about 10 years earlier, we had another grant similar in size where we redid some of the electrical street bridge. So we've gotten a lot, a lot of money for that particular bridge that we own. You know, we've had some other grants, we got some MDOT money for the detour for Memorial Drive. We got money for Lincoln Street, as I mentioned. And we're going to be working on Washington and the old US-31 truck route with a category F and a small urban grant. And the city manager, I think in one of his updates, mentioned the revitalization and placemaking grant that we're going to be applying for, for the west end of River Street. So that'll be coming up and we'll see where that actually happens. So I think one of the themes here tonight is we try to leverage as much as we can and stretch the dollar as much as we can to keep our streets as good as we can. And we're not unique. If you look all across the state, you have communities that have roads that are actually worse than ours. We're actually not as bad as people might perceive it if you do comparables. And there's a state website that you can look at that stuff. One thing to know, it's probably been eight years ago now when they started to phase in the gas tax increase, our revenues for the street funds have probably increased by 60 to 70% from the state of Michigan. Unfortunately, we've had inflation over that time period. So that's great and we have been able to do more work, but we're not doing as much as we would normally be able to. Not only because of commodity inflation, but also because everybody is getting this money that has to take care of streets and everybody's bidding more jobs and the contractors haven't ramped up, there's not as many contractors. And so they can charge higher prices. So it probably hasn't had the bang for the buck that you might think. But getting back to how we need to pay for these things, basically, our funding sources are, are three sources. One is the gas tax that's passed through from the state to us. We can use general fund dollars or we can use some capital improvement fund dollars when those are available. Now, there's other outside funding sources. We talked about grants, we talked about developer money, things like that. But we do want to maximize that return on our investment. And asset management is a really big one. And like, as Jeff said, if we were doing what the book says, purely asset management, our roads would be in better shape, but you'd also have a lot more poor streets. So rather than kind of having three different buckets, you'd have a lot more good roads, you'd have a lot more poor roads and you'd have fewer roads in the middle. But we haven't been able to do that because we have requirements to replace water mains and state mandates and these grants. And so we have to put that all together in a big puzzle to try to do what's best, given the cards that were dealt. One thing that I do really want to point out, we've mentioned this in the last couple of budgets, the state has not followed through with their pledge to fix the bleep roads. They haven't passed the laws to do that, they haven't raised the gas tax, they haven't, haven't done any of that stuff. So we, we did get the last gas tax increase, which has helped. But the bottom line is, we do not have enough money to fix the roads as probably a majority of the citizens would like. They're, they're just simply is not available funds. And we did a big study on this, the council participated in. It's probably been, I don't know, maybe seven, eight years ago, Jeff. It talked about what are the steps to get to better roads? And the, the end result from that was, we're going to try all these things, everything we've talked about and see where that gets us. And you can see from those charts that, you know, even though we're making progress, it's slow. So the only way that we really have to raise additional money, that's a council priority, to fix roads at a faster pace, is to either do a bond project, which would be a voted millage, specifically to raise money for bonds and then you do roads over a three-year period, or to do a renewal of the city's millage, which they call a headley override. Most, most of the taxing jurisdictions call it a renewal of a millage, to roll back, to roll up that millage back to where it was. We're allowed to levy 20 mills and that's been rolled back considerably. We could probably raise close to $700,000 a year if that millage was restored to what it was. But it's been rolled back over the years and we've never restored it. Those are the two options that were listed in the budget and in the, the street program that we laid out many years ago. It's probably where you might need to look if you want to fix roads faster than we've been able to do. Or require significant reprioritization of the services that are provided to reallocate those dollars, which means, yes, you're fixing roads, but you're eliminating other services. If you don't want to eliminate services, you've got to raise more revenue. And so that's been talked about in the last few budgets. There hasn't been really an appetite to do that. If that's something that council wants to look at, you know, staff and administration can certainly work hand in hand with you to, to look at something like that. But right now, there is no proposal for a bond or a millage or for overriding the headley rolled back millages. So with that, I'll open it up to everybody for questions.
How do you, how do you and who does determine which of the local roads in what order get fixed?
It's really that slide that, that we put up that had all those different factors. First, do we have a project or a development that we can, we can partner with? And, and these aren't necessarily in order, but they're kind of in that, that scale. Are there grants available and can we do that grant? Then utilities, do we have utilities that we can, we can afford to upgrade in our highest priority? So there's a couple that are in the, the plan now. Washington Street is actually one of them. We have some serious water main deficiencies along that stretch. So we're able to capitalize on, let's fix that water main. Let's use utility funds to do that, pay for the road above it. We matched that with a grant from, from MDOT on our small urban. And then even though that's a major street, but Fourth Street is a segment where we're seeing, we have undersized water main, we have deterioration in the main itself, and we have horrible street conditions on that. So, you know, there's three or four of those that all are in that same category. Which one is the highest priority from a utility need and then we'll fix the road above it? And so we sit together, everybody who presented and the city manager and some of the, some additional staff from Spicer, and we talk through all of those things and all of those different candidates and, and try to come up with a balanced approach to create that tip.
I think primarily, it seemed like there are years where the sewer, basically bad sewer line was what drove a new road on local streets. And then it was, now lately, it's water repairs that are driving where we do some street repairs.
It is because you have so many candidates. So, so if we, you know, if, if we have, okay, we, we have utility projects here and we have a grant here, we may have a development here. Well, then let's find a, and still have local street money available. We may go to a different segment of town and, and look at the candidates in that area so we have that dispersion across. But there's a lot of data that goes into it. But then in the end, it's, it's the input from the community and from council that is that deciding factor.
So when, so you have local and major roads. And that can change. So what kind of data do you use? You know, a development goes in, it used to be a local road, maybe it's major now. So how do you assess that?
Well, the, every year, the state puts out maps of the local and the major streets.
The state does.
The state puts out those maps. And if the community wants to make a change, then we certainly can either take a major street and decertify it down to a local street or we can petition to have a local street be upgraded to a major street.
So why wouldn't we try to find more major streets then?
Well, there's criteria for those. And actually... And actually, when you look at the way, I don't know if we have a major street map, do we have it in there? We can get you a copy of what the major street network is, but if you think about it, Cherry Street, Spruce Street, Maple Street, the truck route, then, then a, as you go north to south, 12th Street is major, Eighth Street is major, Fifth Street is major, First Street is major, Fifth Avenue. So, you know, when you look at the road network as a whole, there, there's some, there's some reasons why those major streets are there. The downtown district has more major streets because of their, of the, the commerce and the business that occurs. We probably, seven, eight years ago, included some, some major streets that were surrounding the schools, because they get heavier traffic and networking. But there, there's criteria behind that. And, and we get, we get dollars per mile, and then, and then, like Ed was explaining, how we can use those is controlled by the act itself.
I just had one question for Ed, what are some of the services that you would, that we could remove to get more funds? Like, I'm just curious to what that would be.
This is, that's a policy decision, that's why you guys are elected.
I'm just curious of what they would be.
Let me give you an example, and please don't think that this is anything but just an example. City of Ludington does not have a full-time professional fire department, they have paid-on-call staff. City of Manistee has had a full-time professional fire department since 18, what, 18, 7, 16, whatever it is.
Not going anywhere, Tom, I was just wondering.
But that's, that's what the, that's, that's a service level that we have, that we value, that our citizens value, they've made it clear they value that, that other communities don't have.
Okay.
So if they have a general fund budget that's similar in size, but they're not paying for a service like that, then they have more money to spend on other priorities. Another example might be, oh, we made this decision years ago, we got rid of the lifeguards because we didn't think it was cost effective, or councils didn't think it was cost effective. That money got redeployed, you know, where it is now, you don't track the dollar, but over years, but, you know, probably to fund other priorities. So it could be you substitute out capital projects that you're doing and focus it more on, you know, streets. But at the end of the day, there's only so many dollars, and there's restrictions on dollars, and we have way more needs than there's dollars available. So we'll keep doing what we've been doing, and hopefully keep those graphs going up in a positive direction, and hopefully the state will come up with some more dollars. And, and as an aside, the state actually did come up with more money for state highways, they did a huge bond and fixed, you know, I don't know how much it was, it was hundreds of millions of dollars, but they didn't, none of that went to the locals. So until the state can fix that funding formula, we're going to be kind of where we're at. You're not going to see significant increases in the condition of roads, we'll just keep chipping away at it until there's more revenue.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Citizens comment, this is an opportunity for citizens in attendance to comment on municipal services, activities, or areas of city involvement, limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read.
Good evening, council. How are you all tonight?
Good evening.
We have two issues I'd like to...
Can you state your name and address first, please?
Is that mandatory?
Yes.
Is that mandatory?
I think you can let him continue to speak if he's not willing to state his name and address.
I just wanted to know if it's mandatory. My name is Mike Herbert, I live in Manistee. Two items I'd like to touch on first. I'd like to see city council take a stand on the madness that is likely to begin on January 20th regarding the forced extraction of people in our communities that may have lived in them, in them for decades, raising their children, working, paying taxes that they will never see the full benefit of, and being productive, law-abiding members of the communities. This madness is morally wrong. And again, I would like to see council take a public stand on this issue. Secondly, requiring identification in order to make use of public facilities to drop off your recyclables has to be a violation of our Fourth Amendment right to privacy. If the city doesn't want to be part of the recycling effort, say so, and citizens will again throw their recyclables in the trash. But again, I don't believe you have the right to ID absent a crime, and is counterproductive to the effort. Thank you. And I look forward to seeing council publicly address these issues.
Thank you.
I'll be back.
Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to thank staff and Spicer for their work on the streets presentation, well done. Thank you.
Anybody else, staff? No, okay. Ms. Roscoe.
Yeah. Gosh, is there any way we can, everything I go down through, Maxwelltown, and the semis are all coming up the hills. They all have signs on each end of the street, Fifth Street, 12th Street, Sixth Street, I mean, the semis are coming all over, they come by twos now.
So what's the ask, can we get more signage or more enforcement?
I know, well, more enforcement to stop these guys from, they're not supposed to come up or down.
I'll make the officers aware of it.
I mean, you know, I, I know the guys can't be there all the time, but, I mean, Jesus, we got to do something with these guys.
Maybe we can evaluate the signage and see if it's adequate in the area.
Yeah. It, it just, I mean, they're coming in twos now. They're all coming with mortars, you know that. So, but thanks a lot. I see Jeff on our, on Hyper Street, the asphalt is really starting to break out from, from the winter, and already got two months to go yet. So, I knew you'd know that, but I thought I'd tell you. So, thanks.
Ms. Roscoe.
Regarding the vandalism in the bathroom, is it, I mean, it's a shame, number one, but is that a large enough amount we can get insurance reimbursement, or is it just too small, you don't want to bother with it?
We are deductibles $2,000, so we can take a look, but yeah, I think it's right on that cusp.
Wouldn't be worth it, okay.
So do they get to the door then they build, or what?
I don't know if that's the case, I know we're talking about kind of switching up the locking time and maybe reducing some hours, but I don't know.
We see a combination of both, the breaking of locks, and then figuring out a way to prevent the lock from locking at night. And so we try to have our officers check them as much as possible at night. It sounds like we had a group of kids during Christmas break go around and decide to spray paint. So we're working a couple different strategies, maybe looking at reducing some of the opportunity for that crime, possibly as well, so.
Good, okay, thank you. Ms. Kett.
I have no questions, but I just want to thank Christina, very educational about the daycare situation, I didn't realize how much effort is going into that, I appreciate that.
Ms. Raditz. No comment. Mr. Smith.
I am all set, thank you.
So consideration of a closed session, attorney-client privileged communication, request to convene a closed session pursuant to Open Meetings Act PA 267 of 1976 pursuant to MCL 15 dot 2681H to discuss attorney-client privileged communication dated January 2nd, 2025 concerning the MD and our conversation, I'm sorry, conversion and property sale. At this time, council will take action to proceed to closed session, is there a motion?
I will make that motion for closed session.
Heather, would you please take a role?
Councilmember Raditz.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Lasky.
Yes.
Mayor Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Keck.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Roscoe.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are back in open session.
I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
All right.